This meeting to order. This is the Budget Committee meeting, September 24th. And the first item on the agenda is the consideration of the name change of the committee. So I'd love to get the committee's opinion on -- and I put this on the agenda because I think sometimes people get confused when they hear budget. And I pulled up our policy. Basically, we do consider revise and adopt an annual budget, but we don't really have anything to do with the preliminary part of that budget. We come -- the superintendent presents us that budget. Our job really comes after that and then thereafter during the year as we look at transfers and reconciliations. So I was wondering, tossing around maybe a different name that we could potentially bring to the board at some point. I wanted to see what people thought about Finance Committee or other ideas.
I think Finance is more accurate. It certainly is used in other places as well.
Okay. And Dave, did you have a thought?
No, I think that's --
Okay. So I think that is something that the board would have to consider. So I didn't see an item on the agenda for tonight, but maybe at another time, or I could even make a motion. We can talk about that later.
So if you make your recommendation, it will show up on the calendar?
Okay. So that is, we're making that recommendation. So I guess at the next board meeting, we'd be looking for an action item to change, to officially change the committee name to Finance Committee rather than Budget Committee. And that will, I think, alleviate some of the -- or eliminate the confusion that some people might have as to what the actual role of this committee is. Okay. So then the second item is just to review the work of the committee. So I wanted, you know, basically again, in my -- in the first item, I mentioned what our role is and our basically our role. We really don't have anything to do individually with the budget. The budget is presented to the full board by the superintendent. And our role basically comes after that. And we meet in the past quarterly, but I feel, and I think Rich sort of, you can opine on this if you would like, that we would like to meet more frequently, perhaps monthly, and perhaps in advance of the second monthly board meeting, just so that we're going over everything on a timely manner, whether that be transfers or reconciliations. And again, I think we're gonna, as we see in Rich's presentation, we're really gonna distinguish between what is a legally statutory transfer versus something that's a reconciliation that the administration does not require the board's approval on. So I think we're gonna see a more clear presentation of what those items are so the board understands where, what we're being asked to approve. So either, in the most part, we're just being asked to approve these transfers. So I wanted to get a sense from the committee also how they felt about a more frequent, I guess now, Budget Committee meeting, if that is something that sounded acceptable and worthwhile.
I think one of the things I'd like to see this committee able to do is when we're looking at those transfers and reconciliations, where we see work that needs, so that we need to understand better, so that we're better prepared for when we have these conversations during the budget season.
But I'm sorry, so just, do you feel we should meet more frequently? Let's just start with that.
Well, I think that how frequently we meet is probably driven by how, what work we do. So for example, if we agree that we have a fairly robust set of work, then it probably makes sense to meet monthly. I would like to see this committee do more work, so I'd like to see us meet more frequently.
Okay. I think the thought is we will be meeting more frequently. So I just wanted to get a sense from the committee if that's something that I'm bored with. Okay. And then I guess we can move on to what you feel the role of the committee is. And basically, our role, as I see it pursuant to our policy, is that we meet however often it is. It could be monthly at this point. And we review the transfers and discuss the transfers and any reconciliations. And then if there is an item that is in the budget that sort of stands out to you, of course, you should be bringing it up, and that's during our discussion on transfers and reconciliations. You should be opining on any item that is a concern of yours.
Great.
So that's always been the case in the past, and I would like to see that continue in the future. And I don't think people should hesitate to, and I would like to see it happen at the Budget Committee meetings so that administration has time if there are questions, if they have time to be able to flush out answers if they aren't readily accessible to them. So I think that's how we've done it in the past, and I'd like to see that continue. And if there's anything else, like, to expand upon the work of the committee, I'd love to hear from the committee. But, you know, on that, I think that's our primary role.
I agree with the primary role. I think that how we define, you know, looking further, we'll probably have to work our way through a little bit, but I think it sounds great. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay.
I think it's the intention of administration to look at the finances on a monthly basis. Now, how we present that back doesn't have to be as detailed as this. And we can sort of talk about that as we go through a little bit. But in terms of the work of the committee, it's the general responsibility of the board to oversee the functions of the district. And one of those functions is the finances. So if we go through this, we can probably see how that might look.
Yes. Great. And I just wanted to say, Rich, I love this presentation. I love the detail. I almost didn't even look at the more detailed financial presentation because you gave us such a good overview of what we needed to still look at. So I really think this is fantastic, and I guess we can hear from the full board tonight. But I think it's great.
Great. Thank you.
So now, the next item is the consideration of the state budgetary categories. And I put this on here because it ties into the transfers and what are statutory, statutorily required transfers versus reconciliation. So we thought maybe we should tie out, which they're not exactly tied, to the categories that the state statute uses. Ours are a little bit different, so I think what Rich has put here is showing what the state categories are and what our categories are. And then I would love to hear, I'll give my view, but I'd love to hear from the committee, and then we can discuss it with the full board. I think this is something that would have to go, we'd have to recommend a go-to policy to change our actual policy if we're going to change the, that would be the first step. So our recommendation would have to be for the policy committee to have to review that. But, so my thought, just quickly looking at this, was I think we should really tie to the state categories. And I'd love to hear from the committee their feeling, but maybe because of other services, tuition, public and state tuition, all other are contained within that. So maybe that those two items become a subcategory that the board uses for our analysis, but knowing that if there's a transfer or reconciliation within other services, that actually doesn't require the board's approval. But that's something I think the board, I can't speak for the board as a whole, but I think that's something that the board would like to see separated out, continue to be separated out. So I don't know how other people feel about that.
I think from an analytics perspective, that's still information I'd like to understand, but I don't know that from a transfer perspective. Because I, we wouldn't author, I mean, we could authorize those transfers, but, you know, tuition decisions are --
And it falls within other services, so it's not technically something, if it, as long as it remains within that category.
Right.
It's not considered a transfer. It's considered a reconcili, in my mind, a reconcili, account reconciliation.
Right.
So I don't know that we need to, and I guess policy and legal can talk about it more, but I think, I think in my mind, it would make more sense to just mirror the statutory categories, just to be consistent. And then if, honestly, I want to see those numbers broken out. If we feel it needs to be in the policy or not, that's, I think, the policy committee and then the board's decision.
So the recommendation of the finance, I would love to hear from, since you generally did the memo, I'd love to hear from Rich about why, but...
So actually, a few years back, the state came out with what they called the Unified Charter of Accounts.
Yeah.
And so every district broke out by certain categories. And so the one category primarily that's missing within the policies is the other professional and technical services. That typically houses things like consulting services, legal fees, contracted services, maybe in special ed, like conjugal speech or physical therapy, things like that. One of the things that I had to talk to Dr. Adley about, I do think, long-term, the district should look at rebuilding their charter accounts to mirror that of these broad categories. There's a few benefits to that. One, it will actually help us when we do the end of the year state reports. It does provide a little bit more transparency if we were to actually have a financial statement that's broken out by these actual broad categories. So if there are accounting adjustments, you can actually see them within those subsections of your, of your income statement essentially. That would probably be a longer task. If you actually look at the financial statements that we've got now, some of the broad categories are mixed into that, what we call operating, one of those four categories. We also have some items that are actually mixed into salary that would really belong in that professional technical services. So I think long-term, along with this, it would be beneficial for the district to look at actually rebuilding their charter accounts to align with this. And it would also help with just transparency of the financial information off the basis that we began with other categories.
Okay. Great.
So typically, my understanding is that we report out on those four categories. So the intention would be, we can't get there immediately, and we can't really get there for next year, but what would be the transition, those four categories to these categories over time?
Okay. Great.
Just to, operation, you're actually doing that reconciliation in the state year-end. Obviously, that's work that doesn't have any benefit other than just reconciling to the state. So you're spending time on that?
We are. So it used to be a report called the EDO-1. It's actually changed to something called EDS, Financial Statement. And so you have to map your financial data into certain categories carved out. So we do have to kind of segregate that out, kind of slice and dice the information in order to effectively do that report.
So it's an extra step that you're in?
Correct.
Is there any benefit other than the reporting requirements?
In terms of having these four categories, or in terms of...
Do you get anything out of having to run this report other than that you had to run the report? Is there any additional information you can glean from that process?
No. I mean, really, the information you want to know is your, your end-of-year financial statement, and then your audit at the end of the year. The EDO-1 or the EFS, however you want to characterize it, really has no added benefit beyond a typical financial statement.
Thank you.
So if, what I'm hearing you say is basically that it's much more efficient from a process perspective to align, and that it'll help transparency because it's a cleaner, it's a cleaner set of organization. I do think from a policy perspective, while the policy committee will speak for itself, they are intending to mirror the state law, and the policy certainly reflects it fairly directly. So unless there is a specific business reason to be separate, which I don't see here, analytically there may be, but not a, not a financial reason, I'm comfortable.
No, I agree.
Just to stick with the broad categories, but the other state.
State, yeah.
Okay. So that's what the recommendation would be for the committee, I guess, to recommend to the policy committee to then review changing the categories to mirror the state standard broad categories. Okay. Thanks, Rich. That was huge. So there, yes?
I don't know if we are...
You want me to do that?
I don't know if we're looking to work on the charter accounts as part of this, or just separately these broad categories, but I would certainly, whatever we can do to standardize, I think we should be fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
So I think that would be, Chairman, that would be a processes going forward, you know?
Right.
Okay.
But again, even though we have those categories, we'd still want to see some of those items. And the report is very detailed, so we'd want to, we'd still want to see that amount of detail. And I don't know if it has to be monthly, but definitely on a quarterly basis, see that amount of detail, especially as it pertains to the transfers and the reconciliations. Okay. So moving on to the review of fiscal year end '19. And a lot of information here. I don't know if, I guess we could go through your presentation to start?
Sure. And then I'll just kind of give an overview.
Oh, sure.
Go through the presentation?
Sure.
So the fiscal year 2019 is closed. Expenditures ended the year at $97,785,890 against an adjusted budget of $98,122,66. So that did leave a year-end surplus of $336,377, which is about 0.34% of your budget. The areas that really contributed to the surplus was RC 12 maintenance, RC 23, and then RC 26. We did highlight here, really, the surpluses across the RCs were, excluding special education and ELP, the available balance of that 336 thousand was $278,000, and then the balance of $57,000 and change with special education and ELP. I believe the board did receive a forecast in June, what the anticipated year-end forecast would look like, and that was approximately $144,000. So we did see that those year-end results for the year-end balance were $336,000. It is an increase of about $192,000 of the more available funds than anticipated. And the difference, there were small differences across, but it was primarily in tuition on public schools within special education, and then in RC 12 maintenance, about $43,000 less than the projection of electrical. I know there were some highlights, substitutes throughout the year, so we did include in charges, the highlight or substitute ended. Substitute, ten long-term substitutes combined ended up over by about $338,000. But there were salary savings across other accounts that ultimately offset this deficit. In terms of special education, tuition, public schools, and then non-public schools, it was over budget by approximately $149,000. Public schools was actually under budget by about $29,000, and then non-public schools was over budget by about $178,000. So if we actually move to the power point, I think it's kind of the broad highlights of the year-end fiscal report. They did try to mirror this in previous reports that the board did try to differentiate in the past. So as you can see, we did end the year with $97.8 million of expenditures, or a $336,000 surplus. Both of the surplus you see in revenue was actually tied to access costs, which is a reimbursement grant that the district receives from the state. So it is typically around 70 cents on the dollar above their four and a half multiple of expenditures per pupil. So that exceeded forecast by about $691,000. There was additional revenue in the early learning program, building rentals in used fields. You can see certain categories in the expenditures that were over, and those were primarily within special education.
Does anyone have any questions on that until we move on? Just, I'm asked for one that, that fire, Rich. Yes. Okay. So if we could just touch on ELP, the revenue, do we know specifically what went on there? Why there is that bump up in the revenue?
Sure. So my understanding is that the district actually does the book for revenue, in capital practice. So what you have is you have a portion of the previous year's ELP program, and then a portion of this year's ELP program. So in terms of how it's recorded, you end up having a few weeks of the old year, a few weeks of the new year, kind of both together. And it was just additional students that were enrolled that allowed for additional revenue. Cleaner, we would like to probably go forward at some point with the further revenue. So you're actually taking that snapshot of that actual program given here.
And then the use of the fields, that seems like a pretty big jump. Are these other fields being used more, and why, and do you want to increase the fees?
I don't believe it's a fee increase, but I do believe Sheila, who works in the facilities department, has done a very good job at tracking down individuals and making sure people are paying.
Do you have that new program that we put in place?
I believe there is a new program.
So that's helping out.
So you're reflecting on your age receivables, and you're able to track what your age receivables are, and then ultimately collect those in court.
Okay. Great. That's sweet. Thank you.
So the next is just a three-year comparison of expenditures. You can see from fiscal '17, expenditures were about $93.3 million, moving that forward to previous to next year, fiscal year '18 at $95.1, and then fiscal year '19, a year that just closed at $97.71. So the year-over-year change was about 2.78% in expenditure year-over-year, and about 2.71% in those four categories, personnel, operating, fixed, and working.
Any questions?
So there are certain grants that are received by the town or the Board of Education. Educational and mobilization grants, or ECS, is received directed by the town, does not sit in the Board of Education budget. So for fiscal year '19, the district or the town received $511,84. Every year, there's what they call a special education prior year adjustment. So when the district submits their excess cost reimbursement, there can be an adjustment, both positive and negative. The state will attach that to the ECS payment that goes directly to the town. If it's positive, the town just gets an additional sum of money along the ECS payment. If it's negative, they actually just reduce whatever ECS payment is going to go to the town. In the case fiscal year '19, the adjustment was a positive $45,500. So in total, between those two, $556,000, $605,000 was received by the town. And that education grant is really used to offset the break. It doesn't, the board's budget is not reported as revenue, the board's made no statement that it's a revenue sitting on the town.
So I'm sorry, I'm trying to tie in that $98 million number there?
So that's your budget in the...
Oh, so it's the budget.
Right. So you, the community tax was taxed for a budget, not necessarily, you know, you spent 100% of your budget. You did have that 0.34% surplus.
Okay. So you're looking at a budget that are actual.
Correct.
Okay. And we don't, we don't, so, I'm sorry for my ignorance. Does the town return that? What is that, what happens? Do we know what happens with the $556,000?
So it's used essentially often in the, most communities, especially in lower fare county, stop budgeting ECS money. I believe Darien did as well, in large part because they're...
We, in a number of years, we've suggested this.
That's Jack, he's only actually, I think, he's the one that's on the panel.
We did take a conservative approach on many of those state grants, but after looking at a trend of getting money and also having to decide not to overtax our citizens, as well as having a healthy general fund balance, we did start to put in an estimated amount of ECS, as well as offset some of other grants. The total amount that we put in, I do not believe was even the grants we received, which resulted in compensation as a whole finance tactic to establish.
So it said estimated, so there actually was some number put in the budget?
I guess so. So if it was over that budget number, it essentially stays with the town general fund.
Right.
If it's under, then obviously you have a shortfall direct account.
Not on typical or times to use that further financial model moving forward.
The next chart just shows total expenditures and revenue for special education. RC 24 and RC 26. So you can see in the '18, '19, I don't know the year, the net expenditure is $24.3 million. The budget for fiscal year '20 is about $24.4 million. You can just see the trend, which you have the town leveling forward in terms of what they would, to cost centers. So there are grants that go directly to the school. They are federal and state grants. The largest for the district is the IDEA special education grant, and then that is a two-year grant, so there are carryover funds that can be expended. And there's both an IDEA 611 and 619 grant. One is for preschool, and one is just general special education. And then Title I, which is really an improvement program for curriculum, and then a professional development, Title II grant. So also, the majority of those grants were expended. There is a balance within special education and Title I, a carryover going forward.
Any questions on that?
Just back on the, actually, the previous one. It would be helpful, I think, on that special education comparison to see percentage here because the, you know, the numbers look big, but actually, as a trend, we flattened out fair enough. It would be nice to see that.
So on an annual basis, you just want to see the percentage change? Yes, please.
So then this is the comparison of year-over-year expenditures to the adopted budget. You can see that compared to the fiscal year '19 year-end expenditures of $97.7, the adopted budget for fiscal year '20 moving forward is at $101 million, which is a delta of about $1.9, just shy of $2 million, or 2%.
So that's basically the summary of year-end '19. The one thing I, we were going to talk about is zeroing out. And I don't, that's not something we've typically done, and it's not required. Is it for the auditors to do that?
It is not required. Some districts do zero out, some districts don't. My experience has been that you can balance your accounts at the end of the year. It does require more accounting adjustments or potentially transfers at the end of the year, but it does give you an idea of where you're kind of ended the year at when you're looking at an adjusted budget. So if you're looking at one category, maybe it's legal fees, that's going to say that you were over budget in a given year by, you know, $100,000, making that year-end balancing accounts, which allows you to see your adjusted budget, let's say, $300,000. So you'll have a better idea of kind of where you ended the year at and where to balance out your accounts. So a lot of it was included in the accounting adjustments. It balanced out the number of your accounts. It did not balance out the special education accounts, which we did tie up in a separate amount. That was largely offset by the additional excess costs for revenue that was received by the district. But given that many of those categories cross that broad category, within the policy, we can leave those as potentially budget overages and then see revenue offset.
Right. So the committee, I guess, when we go to the board tonight, we need to decide, I guess, you gave us all this information, so we need to figure out, will we be requesting with the board? I guess we should probably, like, if you want to see at the end of the year, everything clean, so we can look at the rest. Typically, I don't think we need that, or just...
So the majority of these really are just accounting adjustments, reconciliations.
Right.
In the memo, I did highlight, if you wanted to zero out or balance out those special accounts, what that would have to be. So that would have to be something the board would approve, if that's something the board would like to see those accounts balanced out.
So could we have more than power recommendations from the administration on this?
Given the current policy that we have, just a degree comfortable making that decision. I'd rather be very clear with the policy of what we can trust for, what the board understands and what the policy allows versus, so we left a number of these with balances or otherwise. So there's some deficits, some of these sitting there. So we have to zero those out then.
Right.
So I would think for fiscal year '19, given that it's closed, we're already, up and running the fiscal year '20, I would probably recommend that we leave those, just highlighting the fact that this is where they ended going forward, it would probably be better to zero out the accounts.
Okay. So that's, and then we'll, I guess, with the special ed number, we should probably have the board opine on that tonight, is that?
Probably.
I would think that's probably for the board to approve that. So that would be, point me to where you, where you have that. Is it in this memo right here?
It is, yes. It's in the transfers and year-end balances. I know, but it did highlight the category that did end the year above budget.
Okay. Yes.
So if there was a desire to essentially close those out, the areas where you have to recommend a transfer for approval would be the excess, excess cost that was received, that extra $691,000. The additional funds within tuition public schools, and then the additional funds within out-of-district transportation could cover all those other categories that ended the year over budget, such as professional development, or tuition on public, or contracted occupational therapy, or ESY, summer schools, or legal fees, or items like that.
Okay. So these, obviously, the year is closed, so these are things that already are extended.
Correct.
Okay. So I do think that the board should opine on this tonight. So I think that, I'm pretty sure there's an action item in there.
Completely.
So I think we should ask the board to take a look at this and approve these specific transfers.
Well, the transfers are broken out, right? But we're just talking about special ed right now?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's just a matter of whether we want to actually do this kind of transfer, or we do the accounting the way it is, right?
Correct.
Which is different from the transfers. Other transfers.
Well, these would cross broad categories.
Right. But you have another set of transfers, right, that are specifically, I'm sorry?
Yeah. So there, we have reconciliations that we're not looking to. So I think what we need to ask, just clearly ask the board tonight, is anything that is deemed a transfer, we need the board to be okay. It's sort of a little bit after the fact, and it's more of an informative.
Correct.
But we want the board to be able to ask questions tonight on these items, and going forward, we'll make sure that... forward, we'll make sure that, before we get to this point, that the board has a fine number.
Correct, so typically, you would receive, in this case, excess cost revenue in February and then in May, so by and large, you'll know what your excess cost revenue was by the end of February, so if there was an instance where maybe you felt your tuition was going to be over budgeted and that was the category you wanted to make a recommendation, you could probably do that in that between February and May timeframe, so that you would have that for the year.
Okay, so I think for tonight, we just need the board to understand clearly what is it, what we're looking, so you can make sure that, it's a great memo, but just to make sure that it's clear to the board, what is a transfer, and make sure that people want questions and concerns on those. And then going forward, we'll have a more clean process for the year-end. Anything else, Steve?
We need to talk some specific transfers, that way? Thought I remembered.
Well, these are the, we, in the memo, he shows us the accounts that are over budget that cross the broad categories, right, so those are the first, those are the first items that we see.
Police and Fire.
So that is that first table, the bottom of the big one.
And then it totals $796,000.
Correct, so then if you were to make the transfers, that file table is essentially.
What it do with, right, so the, the next table will show you what specifically those transfers were looking for, so the, these are the accounts that require transfers, and this is how we reconcile them.
And so the other one is Police and Fire, so special ed we understand is because of excess costs, but then Police and Fire, you got the second point, right, due to a miscoding.
Correct, so. So there were two accounts outside of special ed that did end the year over budget, they were both under the account Police and Fire, so typically Police and Fire is used, whether it's for graduation, where you might have a police officer there, or fire duty for, let's say, a concert that's going on. During the year-end close, there were payments for SAT proctor payments that were coded incorrectly to Police and Fire, so now that the year's closed and your state reports have been filed, you don't actually have the ability to adjust where that expenditure goes until the state opens up what they call the audit adjustment period, which is in November. So it doesn't change your expenditure, it just changes really where that account is. I could not probably recommend a transfer for those, given that they're just miscoded to an incorrect account.
Okay, so we'll just leave those out and really just focus on, and in the future, something like a proctor for the SAT should not be.
So it should go in an account called temporary hourly help, but it was miscoded.
We know why they were miscoded, was it just a clerical error?
It was a clerical error.
And so both of those items that we see there for Police and Fire, those were both for SATs?
Correct. One was unfortunately coded to RC seven, which is an elementary school, and you would obviously have SATs in an elementary school, so it was also miscoded to the wrong RC and the wrong account.
And that might have just been the time period where.
It could, correct, it was.
Directive advances. So I guess tonight, we, we need to see which items you're saying recommending, and so I guess we should exclude those.
Yes.
Anything else on fiscal year 19? Everybody clear on what's going to happen tonight? So now, we'll go on to fiscal year 20, and we're looking at July and August, and I don't know where you want to start on that, do you want?
So I'll start with the memo first, and then I'll kind of just highlight the financial report, and then we can go through PowerPoint.
Okay, wait, this is sort of, I guess, up, maybe tonight, you can mirror the same presentation, just, thanks.
So the financial report does currently forecast a surplus of $404,609, however, it's very early in the year, it's only a financial report through August, so the majority of your expenditures really haven't occurred yet, so a lot of it is tentative. So I did highlight just some areas that you'll see in the financial report, within middlesex middle school, there is salary savings due to some teachers on FMLA leave of absence, that's about $41,000, eventually that'll likely go to our long-term substitutes because the expenditure to cover those teachers who are out are, is coded in the personnel budget on their long-term substitutes, the turnover savings being extinguished, the certified column change does have an available balance of $57,000, budget control remains untouched, which is the majority of that $404,000. There is salary savings within special education, there is a salary overage in the paraprofessional line item within special education, but there is a corresponding offset in the ELP paraprofessional, it is very tentative and early because we are in heating season, but heating fuel is tentatively considered over budget, water as well, and then we did receive revenue reimbursement for Medicaid reimbursement of $1,100, so that's an additional benefit to the budget. So you can really see the areas on the second page that highlight where the year-end surplus is forecasted at, middlesex middle school, personnel, which is primarily budget control, special education, though that would be tentative, and then ELP. Before we go into the transfers, because I believe that's the next item on the agenda, I'll just highlight, kind of go through some of the RCs in the financial report. So in RC one, there was some typical shifting of employees at the beginning of the year and staff turnover, so there is an adjustment, accounting adjustment of $26,744. In RC two, Fitch Academy, there is a .6 FTE increase, though this increase was absorbed from staff turnover, so you'll see an accounting adjustment of $19,763. In middlesex, there is an adjustment of $80,021.
I just think we need tonight.
Yeah, I don't think I'll go a little slower.
Well, just in case when we get to eat, as usually typically what we do is we go through RC by RC, just make sure that people have an opportunity to ask any questions, so just, does anyone have any questions so far on any of that? Thank you.
So as I mentioned, in RC three, middlesex, there is an accounting adjustment of $80,21. As I mentioned, we do have a couple of teachers out on FMLA leave of absences, so there's a salary savings of $16,850 in health and living, and then $25,035 in foreign language. There are long-term substitutes covering these absences, so those expenditures are coded to personnel in RC 18, so it's likely that the salary savings will ultimately be recommended for an adjustment down the road to our long-term subs. In RC five, we do have one less section of kindergarten, however, we do have one more section of fourth grade, so in total, the sections even out, but there is an adjustment between those two sections in salary. In RC seven, we have the same number of sections, but some adjustments in staff location and turnover. In RC eight, we do have an additional section in first grade, but staff turnover and adjustments offsetting this to about $33,000. In RC nine, we do have one less section of kindergarten, so there is an adjustment of In RC 10, we do have one less section in kindergarten and second grade, though there is an adjustment that should be made to the financial report, actually two adjustments. On line 361, under psychologist, the current staffing shows 1.0, which should actually say .35, and in grade two, there was a reduction that I mentioned, and so there'll be another $75,488 that will show in the September financial report that will actually go to staff turnover. So that'll balance out those accounts. In RC 11, the adjustment is really non-union salary increases. In RC 12, maintenance, we again have non-union salary increases and then staffing adjustments and contractual increases. In RC 15, technology, we have salary increases, staff turnover for the digital learning director, and then adjustments for the copy center at the beginning of the year, beginning of the year hours as well. In RC 16, we have salary adjustments, in RC 17, we also have salary adjustments and contractual raises. In RC 18, which is personnel, we have adjustments for contractual raises, we did release the contractual support line item for all the contractual agreements that we mentioned earlier, and then we did extinguish the staff turnover credit, which was budgeted at $400,000. It is reflected here at the 404-808, so there's an extra $4,800 of available funds that were over and above the staff turnover credit, however, as I mentioned, in RC 10 for Token Eight, we will make a recommendation for an accounting adjustment in the September report, which will actually increase the available money in the staff turnover credit, so that $4,800 will actually go to about $80,000 over and above, so you actually exceeded your staff turnover credit by about $80,000. RC 19, we have salary adjustments and contractual increases, in RC 20, we have salary adjustments and contractual increases. In RC 21, library, we do have an adjustment between online resources and materials, both of which consider supplies in the broad category. In RC 22, there are no adjustments, in RC 23, there are no adjustments. In RC 24, we do have salary and staffing adjustments, one thing you will notice in RC 24 is there is a projected deficit in the teacher aides of row 854, we are one paraprofessional over currently in RC 24, but there is a corresponding salary savings in RC 26, so I did not recommend an accounting adjustment for that, I figured I would highlight that first, and then in the September report, we'll make that recommendation for an accounting adjustment. We are still in the process of reviewing items like consulting services, contracted services, tuition, and transportation, so again, given it's two months into the year, it is a very tentative forecast within RC 24. If we go to RC 25, which is fixed, we are not, I'm not recommending any adjustments at this time, given very early in the school year, heating season hasn't begun, but tentatively, given where the year ended last year, I would anticipate that we will likely have to make some type of adjustment or transfer into heating fuel, but I think it would be better to actually wait until we get into the heating season to make a firmer forecast. There are items that are reflected here that actually, more information has come out since the report has been reflected, and it's actually some anticipated savings, so we do have anticipated savings in property insurance of about $7,000, workers' compensation of approximately $50,000, general liability insurance of approximately $10,000, and then student accident insurance of approximately $16,000, so that's $83,000 that would end up hitting your year-end surplus, once we adjust those accounts in the September report, so that would just increase your favorable balance at the end of the year.
Could you just highlight those again?
Sure, so the first one would be property insurance of about $7,000, workers' compensation of about $50,000, general liability insurance of about $10,000, and then student accident insurance of about $16,000. So the bulk of those are actually karma policies, with the exception of the student accident insurance policy.
And you don't, you don't have that highlighted?
No, I did not highlight, so we got some other, actually invoices a little after we put this together, so that would be reflected in the September report.
Okay, so we can hold.
So then RC 26, we have no adjustments at this time, again, we do have that highlighted teacher aide position on row 989, with a surplus that's not filled, that was the one that I had mentioned as the counter to the one that's over in RC 24. So overall, we are projecting a surplus, obviously it's very tentative, $404,609, that does not include the approximately $83,000 that I mentioned in fixed costs, so obviously if you were to add that, you're closer to about 487, but again, it is obviously only through August.
Typically, budget control's always out there, so it's something that we need to keep in mind.
So the majority of these accounting adjustments are really typically what you would see at the beginning of the year, is staff either moves location, or you hire staff who's replaced people that left.
So most of these adjustments are related to salaries and staff, so it's, it's very typical at the beginning of the year, as settling to who's going where, and that's typically what we see every September, so it doesn't seem like much out of the ordinary.
Can we just clarify, though, in terms of movement of bodies, so it looks like in 24, you have, you know, a surplus in the special class teachers that, yeah, that we didn't need, and you have the overrun in the aides, that's different from the ELP eight, or that's the same, that's a different.
So it's different than the ELP eight, but the, there is a balance for an aide position not filled in ELP, and so in talking to Shirley, I think the expectation is that the funds from RC 26 for that vacant aide will cover the aide in special education, but we do not recommend that that is an adjustment at this time.
Do you have any questions? Okay, looks very typical, okay, we can move on to the budget transfers then.
So there are three transfers that would need board approval for fiscal year 20 currently, the first one is for $4, it is for the National Association of Music, so it's just, it is a membership that is purchased every year, it just happens to be $4 more than that was budgeted, so it does cross broad categories, so it would need board approval, going from supplies to other. The next one is for $48.50, that is for an annual maintenance and support agreement, it just happened to be a little bit more than it was actually budgeted, and again, it crosses broad categories between supplies and purchase services. And then the third one is, it is a bit of an accounting adjustment, but because it does cross broad categories, it does need board approval, $19,428. So in the budget book, there was a line in ESL instruction, the narrative in the budget book actually talked about how it was for professional development and materials portion of it, so we really do need to segregate out that account into two, so the portion that would remain salaries, would stay in salaries, but this $19,000, which is really intended for professional development and materials, should be classified into a supply account, and so since it crosses broad categories, that would need board approval as well.
So you're just segregating out the portion that is actually going to supplies rather than.
So in total, the transfers totaled $19,480.50.
So back to that, transfer number three, that's not something new, that's something that was already there, we're just.
You're just putting it into the appropriate category.
So, we're not going, it's a new expenditure.
It's not a new expenditure, or an expenditure that was unanticipated, we just want to reclassify it in that.
But since it's going, it's crossing over those broad categories, we, the board is required to transfer, to approve that transfer. Okay, that's great. Any questions on that? I think that's, I think that's it. Any public comment?
I was wondering this, David, I just want to check what we got to, are we getting current.
I will have to check on the, what do you.
And then in terms of RC eight power, parent and ELP parent, we have an ELP enrollment throughout the year, I would support, I'm not making that adjustment too late, because we need to talk about the, so.
So one of the reasons we did not want to make that recommendation for an adjustment now, talking to Laura, students can come in throughout the year, so rather than doing anything too early until she either has a firm understanding, nobody's going to come in that needs a power, we'd rather leave it in RC 26.
We're not, you're not recommending anything?
Not as of yet, no.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, you're right, and then one, I'm sure, do we have any idea, do we have any outstanding, we need to.
For last year, I don't believe so, but I can double check it.
Okay, now public comment. She is, well, do, do we need you to be closer to the microphones?
Okay. Because I'm supposed to identify myself.
Yes.
I am concerned on some of the analysis, and we were at that, that the administration would be very thoughtful of providing simplistic numbers, as an example, on the ECL, just putting down what the percentage of ECR is to what the special ed costs were, is very misleading information. The analysis should also look at what was submitted, what was reimbursed, so you have what the reimbursement percentage was, the number of children that were there, you know, the submission, as well as what our four A have on the doctoral, because all of those will affect what that number is, and I don't want other organizations, including the RTM or the Department of Finance, to just sort of say, oh, you've been getting that X percent of your total course, so that's the number that I want to use, because if you really does have all those other issues that drive that. So I just want that. Another example is turnover. One of the things that we were talking about is if you look in the shift of the staff, some of our higher grades have left over a number of years. And so it comes a point where turnover does exist, but you may not be achieving the same numbers as you had in the past as some of the higher grade teachers have already left the issue. So that's what I'm saying, is just be cautious of very high-level simplistic analysis being descriptive because there's a chance it could be misappropriated. And that then creates, you know, what I could use as a budget.
So are you talking about our monthly presentations or are you speaking more of when we get to the budget?
I think some of the analysis they've been providing here monthly, because obviously once you put it into this meeting, it's in public domain. And therefore, well, this may be slightly intended. And I know it was so popular that most of my community would like to watch it. So she's a former member. So, you know, and other members of the Finings Watch and members of the RTM Education and the Watch. So having more robust analysis, which typically ends up on the correct identity, allows the people not to misinterpret a simplistic analysis of just a percentage. And obviously, the administration will determine and the finance will determine where it is. I'm just putting out, oh, one, one simplistic analysis.
Any other public comment?
If I may?
Sure.
I just want to recognize Richard. He came in, I mean, he was really only a month into the district, had the platform running, getting to know the financials, putting it together. And then also sort of would like a perspective. This is our perspective of how you may have received it in the past. Is it the way you wanted to move it forward and that type of stuff? So the feedback on that, that's fine, we're willing to receive that openly, obviously. But I want to thank Richard for the transition, because clearly you had transitions between personnel as well and the department.
And I will just add to that. I am glad to have more detail, and I do think the board as a whole should discuss if they want to present it in a different way. But I think it is useful for our analysis, the way, and I think you've really gotten a handle very quickly of where the numbers are. So I appreciate all the work that went into this.
Thank you.
And the clarity of the memos, you know, in terms of driving what are the decisions we're making and why.
Great.
Okay, then we'll adjourn. Thank you.